I'm looking for Brett, but I'm sure somebody can find you. We've got plenty to do actually on the agenda, not to mention council interests and issues. We haven't had that in a while here. So Marcus, you want to begin the agenda over?
Sure. Ms. Mayor and members of council, we have an aggressive agenda today. I will say that right after my agenda overview, there's an opportunity for council interests and issues. I know it's been awhile since we've been together. Before I do that, what I'd like to do is introduce to everyone Lori Crouch, who started with the city on August the 8th, and she's our new manager for Public Relations. And we're very pleased to have Lori with us as part of the team.
Is it communications or public relations?
Public relations.
Public relations, great. Okay Lori, welcome.
And also in line with that, basically what we've been doing over the course of the last six months, we've been trying to create for you a customer-oriented organization. With that said, we've actually been recognized by ICMA, the International City and County Management Association for our public outreach efforts. As a matter of fact, we'll be one of, I believe, six localities throughout the nation that will be identified at their national convention in September. Highlight of it is exactly what council is doing in going through your priority setting process. We've had an opportunity to meet with council again back in June. We've also been out into the community, but in terms of just the customer outreach, I think it's something that's very good for Norfolk in terms of having the opportunity to highlight the whole community engagement process. With that said, it's important that next week we continue with their outreach in terms of trying to make sure that we are addressing some issues that have been longstanding with council. Basically, there are a couple of things that we will go over next week in our two committees. We have the Communities and Public Safety Committee meeting next week, as well as their Health, Education, and Families Committee meeting next week. Under the Community and Public Safety Committee meeting, we will be discussing, what's very important to us as we look forward, a program that we're calling Impact. And basically what we're doing is that I think you've lived through it, and many residents have lived through it, picking up the phone, calling for a particular service, and being bounced around, and potentially not getting an answer that addresses a question. So in a perfect world, we could jump from where we are to what many localities have done, which is a 3-1-1 system. We'd like to eventually get there. But that doesn't mean that we need to wait 18 months in order to be a customer-oriented organization, and that's what we're going to do. So we will make a presentation next week about how we're going to try to centralize calls that come into the city, so that when residents have issues, those issues can be addressed, as opposed to being bounced around. So if you want to talk about priorities for the administration, it's right there in the top one or two. And we'll discuss that a bit next week, as well as we'll give you a crime stat update. And we have now had a discussion about the 3rd precinct at ODU. We want to have a conversation in the committee meeting next week to bring you an update of where we are within, and where we've been. In terms of Health, Education, and Families, we will have the presentation of birds, bees, and bunnies, as well as our runs walk. So those are, again, issues that have been outstanding for awhile. We'll also have a brief discussion about community policing and new initiatives as it relates to community policing. What I'd like to do now, before I turn it over to, back to you Mayor, there's two quick points. One is that baseball. We have worked out our issues as it relates to Little League baseball. Is Darrell here? Yeah. Darrell, put it in here. Darrell has some very good news to share with the council.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. There will be baseball for Fleet Park this spring, coming up in 2012. Fleet Park and Azalea Little League have worked out an agreement for Fleet to play at the Azalea Little League complex. We're making renovations, field upgrades at the Azalea complex to host both leagues. We'll also be making renovations for Ocean View Little League, and we'll be actually upgrading their fields and putting in an extra field for Ocean View. They play at the open space area right between Willoughby and Ocean View Elementary School. So the Little League presence from Fleet to Azalea have done a good job. They reached a compromise, and it's going to be baseball this spring, starting in April. That's just a temporary solution. We're still looking for a permanent home for Fleet Park.
Yes, sir.
Nice going.
I think if you put the money into Azalea, and that's successful, in my opinion, I don't think that Fleet Park needs to have a special place. My son plays at Fleet Park, so that, and he's been playing there, but I don't think that they need, you know, if you put the money into the field over at Azalea, because of the playoffs this year, they had, they had a lot of games over at Azalea, and that is a very, very nice field. So I think if you really, I don't know how much money you're going to put in it, but if you put a substantial amount of money in there, then I think the Fleet Park guys should just need to take a deep breath and say, "This is home." That's just my opinion, and that's a very unpopular opinion.
Well, now we see how it works.
Yeah, I mean, because I mean, it's so nice over there at the Azalea field. They just haven't had any money. And if we're going to really put some money into it, I think they really could coexist. And I think that, you know, I think they could coexist. And I think they've worked out things in terms of concession stands and all of those things, and hot foods and cold foods. And I think that Azalea field has just been, it's just a diamond in the rough. We'll see. Of course, after next year, I won't have a dog in the fight, and my boy will be out.
He'll be over at Grand, be bothering me.
Mayor, I would like to mention one more thing. Next week, we would like to go into detail a bit about where we are in terms of just the economic backdrop. We do that each month to the Finance and Economic Development Committee. We didn't have the meeting this month, so we'd like to just make that presentation. There have been a bunch of questions about the federal government, the downgrade, the impact on the city, so we'd like to make sure that we provide you with information related to that.
Okay. Marcus, while we're talking about money, it's not on your printed agenda here, but yesterday we made an announcement about purchasing of the apartment units at Woods Corner. And the thought was that we would address that tonight. We would give the council an update on that, and maybe most importantly, tell the council the source of the funds. I mean, I know we've had it budgeted for a couple of years now, but we want to just touch briefly on that now, and with the notion that next week we will have an ordinance confirming the purchase or adopting it.
Well, I'll tell you that that was especially good for the administration. I've had the opportunity to be a part, to staff the Woods Corner Task Force while I was the Assistant City Manager. And that's been something that's been very important to that area for awhile, the purchase of the apartment. So the money had been accumulating all the time. So in other words, there was about a million seven in the FY11 or last year's CIP, as well as another million that became available July 1. So about six weeks ago, the other million became available. Again, there was an opportunity to get a good portion, a good chunk, from one individual. And the combination of those two years of funding, so again, something that was already set aside for that purpose, allowed us to go in pretty quickly and go in and make the offer. So you're exactly right. Next week, we'll have an ordinance for you. But the funding were previously earmarked funds for that purpose.
I just want to make the point, this is money that had actually been budgeted for this purpose over two separate budgets. It hadn't been pulled from somebody else's project or anything. Maybe it's money that was actually accumulating for this.
I think, not to rush it, of course, people find that the city wants to buy something, prices go up, and I think we exercised a lot of patience over a couple of years, putting up a lot of discussion to get to the point where we could buy at the right price. And I think the staff did a great job on that. It would've been easy to just throw a bunch of money and get half the value, but I think you've got good money, good value for your money, and I think that's.
And we established a per-unit basis assessment for ongoing purchases.
I'm also working with the neighborhood, who had first, you know, been told to discover what they thought was the best use of that money, and what were the most needy facilities to purchase. So, you know, I think there's an awful lot of neighborhood input that's been going on over two or three years that many of you are not aware of, and that's been crucial.
And I missed one more. There's one more, a big ticket item that we'll discuss before the end of the month, and that's Waterside. There's one thing that Darrell Hill, who has a chunk of food in his mouth, one thing that we had discussed a few weeks ago is Mr. Riddick, Councilman Riddick, had asked about the value of property. So, you know, when we start to look at that, we look at the entire waterside. So Darrell, you do have an update?
There are a variety of parcels between or from the Wisconsin all the way to Harbor Park. The land in that area is assessed at just over $77 million. And of that 77 million, again, looking at just the land, there's roughly $42 million of it that's owned by the city. The bulk of that is for Nauticus and Waterside, and there are scattered parcels with a variety of values. When you include the structures, there is a hundred, just over 113 million of assessed value in the buildings. The vast majority of that value is privately held.
13 million or 113?
113.6 million. Of that 113.6 million, roughly 77 or 8 million of it is private, with Dominion Tower, Harbor Park, and Sharon. Said differently, city-owned is building value approximates $33 million. So of the total 190, just under 191 million of value from the Wisconsin all the way to Harbor Park, the city owns roughly 75 million. That's including land and the structures.
Does include.
Could you break that out on a piece of paper for us, just like you?
Sure.
And get it to the council.
You can read this.
Yeah, okay. Something that we can maybe get it this weekend to.
We'll do.
Marcus, real quickly with the Demby Park purchase. Do we, when we buy these properties, and I brought this up a couple of months ago, do we factor in the demolition cost in this? Because I know we have a history of buying buildings, but then we have to wait quite awhile to demo them, because we have to get that money out of a different account. And I just, this is a great purchase, but down the road, as we continue to make purchases, I think that we should include an estimate of the demo demolition money in that dollar amount, so that once that building is acquired, we can take it down right away, and it doesn't sit vacant, allowing for crime or other activity to happen with it.
Sure. I totally agree with you. These buildings won't stay long in terms, once we acquire them. You're exactly right in terms of building and the demolition costs. I quickly got to $2.7 million as we were talking about the purchase price. So clearly, demolition isn't in that, but we have funds that we are able to take down.
It's a demolition budget.
Yes.
68 units, 52 of them are vacant. And there are other vacant units out there that the folks can move to. None of the leases in existence stretch beyond July of 2012. Okay. Edit, Marcus. Okay. Council interests and issues.
I've done mine.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Riddick.
I've done mine.
Okay, go ahead. I want you to note, it's never.
I'm just going to pass up some letters. I guess a lot of us got one about parking on Red Gate, handicapped area, and others about Ocean View Park, and I'm sure you got that.
They've taken care of that already.
Yep, threw that away.
He was out there, they were out there today, working with her.
Another is about this, somebody who thinks they were mistreated about having their property grass cut. Another rather lengthy letter that went over your head to the governor, but it's about a.
The grass cut one has been taken care of too. I gave that to Darrell.
And the last one is this email we all got on parking recreational vehicles in front yards, and this guy that was complaining. Did everybody get that? He's right. I mean, it seems to me that he's right, and we're telling him he's wrong. He's put verse in scripture. I don't quite understand. I don't understand why we went back and said, you know, you don't have a case here, or you're not right. You think we. The guy thought they had, but they weren't.
The images and the pictures we've got, the vehicle is actually parked behind the front line of the house. It's exactly the situation Mr. Riddick is describing. That's legal.
Right, I understand.
And I have talked to my staff that they should not have simply told the man who was complaining, the party complaint wasn't valid. They needed to explain why the complaint wasn't valid. And the issue is exactly as Mr. Riddick has stated.
We've addressed it with.
Yes, sir, we have addressed it.
Well, one of the pictures, Frank, had a van parked on the street as a commercial vehicle. That's, that didn't seem like that there was anything wrong with that.
If it is a commercial vehicle by definition, that would be a code violation.
Okay.
But the complaint that I got from the gentleman dealt with the RV.
Okay. He sent another series of photos that had a white van parked on the street.
You're not allowed to park a van or a commercial vehicle, work van, at your truck. A pickup truck is about the limit.
Right. I didn't see anything on the work van. It didn't.
It doesn't have to have any writing on it. It depends on the vehicle type. That's all spelled out in city code.
Okay. Dr. Whibley.
Darrell handled everything, but are we doing appointments today?
No, we're going to do that next week.
All right. Could we, so my next question is the retreat. And I suspect we're talking about that today, about where we're meeting. Are we doing, you know, topics for retreats? The retreat, are we going to supposed to bring up topics, or are you going to tell us what's going to be talked about, or how are we going to do that?
Sure. I have a, and ultimately, it's going to be what's important to you. I have an agenda that I'm putting together, and what we're trying to do as administration is not have a year-after-year discussion about the same topic. So what we're trying to do is bring closure to issues. So some of, unfortunately, some of the things that we will discuss in the retreat in terms of the administration, maybe things that you've seen before, but other things like Impact, where we think we're going to, we know we will change the way we deliver services, or the things that we'd like to focus on and try to make sure that we even enhance those. So we have a skeleton agenda for council.
And will we see that before retreat?
Yes.
Could we put appointments on there to, once again, try to see if we can get this formalized, so that once again, we can try to get these done in the time limit? Is that okay?
Yeah, but it's not always, sometimes people don't come to council meetings when we've got the things scheduled. And so it's not just the scheduler, it's sometimes it's the people who make decisions who hold up the process. And so, I mean, we can try to, I mean, yeah, we will certainly get that on the agenda. And maybe we ought to try to do it every month.
Well, I thought maybe we could discuss how we think it's best. Brett can give us Impact, if we're going to do that. And then for this Impact, let me just add one little thing that I hope you're thinking about. As an example, I heard from a gentleman today who'd been, this recess, that had been cited. It ultimately turned out that his father was charged and had to come down, and they were going to put him in jail. He lived in Maryland. So he went through the Department of Health, he went through codes, he went through the Commissioner's Office, he went through, I mean, there was just this flurry of people, and the right hand didn't know what the left hand was doing. You know, it was frustrating for him, it was frustrating for me. You know, I hope that when you talk about these impacts, you have some way that when there's an issue, all the departments that are responsible can meet at the same time. I hope that's a part of that.
Sure. It's frustrating for me also. So in other words, everything you said, it's exactly what we're going to fix.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I saw Andy roll his eyes, and I know why now. But I didn't, I wasn't referencing any specific council member, not even going to look in that direction.
See, now Andy, I thought he was talking about me.
I did too.
Well, I was talking about Terry, actually.
I knew he was talking about me.
We'll get it straight. We'll find some time next week to, we'll get Brett to circulate. We've really got to deal with the medical school issue. They, we, they have a vacancy there. Dr. Simpson is not able to serve, and they really.
Which one, medical school?
Yeah, and that was one of the reasons I've heard him say.
Yeah, okay.
Need Lake Taylor Hospital, too.
Lake Taylor is, I think we've worked on that.
Who we put on there? Did we do that?
Doctor, what's his name?
We're good impression.
We'll get that on the agenda next time, too. But they're looking, they're looking for a member for the medical school right now, so we'll, maybe we'll talk about that. What's that?
Never mind.
Okay.
From an economic development standpoint, I would hope that you would come up with an initiative that addressed the issue of businesses in the city of Norfolk, whether it be small businesses or large businesses. Anytime that we're using city dollars, whether we're giving to, giving them, using them directly, or that we fund different agencies, that we look to do business with businesses in the city. I think that's important when you're talking about city dollars, that we try to help these small businesses or large businesses, staff them. They pay taxes in the city. The least we could do is spend our dollars in the city, opposed to spending our dollars in other municipalities where we don't get a return off that dollar. I see that sometimes we have businesses that operate within the city of Norfolk, but we go outside and use other vendors in other cities. And I think we really need to look at that. That could be a part of our economic development initiative, in terms of helping businesses right here in our community.
Sure. Mr. Vice Mayor, I knew I should have ticked off everything on my list. I am going to convert one of my assistant to city manager positions for just that, and it's going to be an economic and workforce development position, which concentrates, and we're building it off of a model in Durham, which will concentrate exactly on what you've asked.
Thank you. Another thing, 21st Street, no with Princess Anne, Military, Valentine, and Virginia Beach Boulevard. These young kids are out with their football hands on the corners, dying out in front of traffic, what have you. We talked about this some time ago, and that the only persons that are permitted to be out there is, I know that the Nation of Islam, and people have to come into City Hall to get a permit or what have you. But it's dangerous for these kids, and me, I just think it sets the wrong precedent. And so I would hope, because I see police officers just riding by these areas, and we've, I hope that they could get the word out to other police officers as they're going back to the station or what have you. It don't take a lot of time to stop and say that this is not permissible, you know, within our right of ways. Code enforcement issues, you write down thoroughfares, some of our major thoroughfares, whether it be Lafayette Boulevard, Virginia Beach Boulevard, or Title Water Drive, and we see vehicles parked on the grass. I don't know how we mitigate, most of this is in the evening time, but I don't know if we just do a public awareness campaign, but I just think that if people, you know, ride through our major vessels and see this, when it's not permissible, you know, little things like that could help from an aesthetic standpoint, because you can't really appreciate the work that's going on internally in the community when you see these types of things happening on the peripheral areas of the community. So I know that we probably need some help from the code. I know you're trying to get every department up to speed, but in the absence of that, maybe we can do some type of PR campaign to help people understand that that's not, that's against code.
Anthony, can we add Westwood Creek Road to Woods Corner, too?
Problem areas that we continue to see illicit activity, One Stop on Merrimack, the, One Stop on Princess Anne, Merrimack Avenue, that store there, on Merrimack Avenue, and I guess a couple of houses, that Wayne know the addresses of the houses that are on Merrimack Avenue, that some activity is taking place in. And on the corner of Berkeley Avenue and Wilson Road, there's a store there on one corner. You know, they, I don't know if it's against code or not, but they got a big sliding door that comes down at night. But during the day, their glass doors just shattered. They propped it open, but there's a lot of, it don't take a rocket scientist to see what's going on between there and the place, the auto mechanic place across the street from it. But I know we had, I got on the auto mechanic place once before out there, the condition of the yard or what have you. But I just, the street walkers, if you will, that are walking during the day as well as in the evening out there. I mean, they built some nice houses there on Wilson Road, about four in a row. Hate to see them lose momentum, because we're not doing our part. So that's one issue. And as it relates to demolition, I would hope that as we go forth and look at demolition contracts, that we have more than one person on the list with one crate. You know, he's been taking down this building in Broad Creek for like, three weeks. I mean, that's a building that shouldn't have been down in a week. You know, he ain't got half the building down. So, I mean, I know money, I know we're trying to be fiscally conservative as we look at our dollars, but, I mean, they need to be able to perform a suitable amount of time. The other thing that I would say, that, you know, I read this article in the paper about this young man that was beaten and shot at Park Place, I mean, at the City Park a couple of years ago. Said about 11 bloods, white t-shirts. They said, I guess what really concerns me is that you see it happening more frequently, is that you get a lot of people that witness these incidents, but are not willing to come forward. And I don't know, I mean, as a city, I know we don't put up rewards. I know you got the hatline and the thousand dollars, but something is wrong somewhere from a community standpoint, or the, I mean, extension, people don't feel comfortable sharing information. I don't know what it is, can't put my hand on the pulse. But we have to do something, because we can't solve crimes if we don't have information. But it greatly concerns me to see that almost 30 people witnessed what happened, and no one is willing to come forward and testify or to say what happened. We got a lot of incidents or situations that have happened in the city within the last couple of years, where people are just not forthcoming with the information that could solve these murders. And, you know, I would just hope that, you know, we can, I know we got a great rate of solving murders, but just from a community standpoint, we have to break that. You know, we got to get people willing to take a sense of pride, and a sense of ownership in their community, and be willing to stand up, you know. I don't know how we get there, but I hope that we can begin to have dialogue to do that. Thank you. but I, I, I hope that we can begin to have dialogue to, to do that. Thank you.
Angela?
I'd like to get, at some point, get an update on our Neighborhoods Initiative. When, how, I know we have six child neighborhoods, how the selection process is going to be handled, and when that's going to actually roll out for neighborhoods to, you know, start working on that. And then, in addition to that, the neighborhoods that are not in the pilot six, but who want to do some things on their own, how are they going to be helped as well? What resources are they going to have available to them from the city in order to do some of the, you know, some of the things on their own? I had an email from Huntersville, and they were concerned about, you know, having some input in the decision-making process for Huntersville. So at some point, I'd like to, Norview does a kind of a neighborhood meeting, if you will. I went to Anthony once a quarter, when they bring everybody together. No, it's not the task force, but like the one we have where we walk the neighborhood, and then they brought everybody together from all of the community, from all of the city. But we just had it.
Yeah, Tannas Creek.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Tannas Creek, okay. I'd like to put something similar to that together to get community feedback for Huntersville, and what they want to see for their community, and, you know, how we can partner with them and work with them, and, and deal with some of the problem areas that we have over there.
I'm sorry, I, I had a brief briefing this morning, and some of the issues revolve around some of the previous plans for the community. So I talked with Frank, and there's, he's putting together information, and I'm going to actually personally attend that meeting, too.
Okay, all right. And then, the last thing I have is, some of the reunions, we, I had three in my community this weekend, and before I could get to them, I got rained out. But I've had several people who were in, citizens, who were in the planning process, because I guess the process changed hands, or who was handling, the, the department changed hands as of July 1st, and so therefore some of the processes in putting these reunions together, and some of the requirements, and things like that have changed from previous years. Anyway, a lot of people were just not happy, who were in the planning, who were working on the committees that were planning the reunions. They were not happy with how the process happened. It was like they did everything they were told to do, and then there were some things that were left off, and they had to go back and do some other things, and then a week later, you know, a week before the event, there's one more thing we got to do. So I just think that, you know, I know that we, we changed around a lot of things, and so I just think that next year, if we could just look at getting maybe an online component together, that people who are interested in having reunions, this is what's required. These are all the documents, all the departments, whatever it is that you have to do, and maybe posting that online somewhere, or at least having some kind of comprehensive packet that they can come pick up from City Hall or whatever, so that they know everything that's required of them. Because most of the people want to be compliant, if you tell them everything that they have to do. So...
And I hope that no one was negatively impacted in terms of not being able to have a reunion. What we attempted to do was there really wasn't a process beforehand. So it was, we'd like to be consistent. So in that, and I know that Ann's working on it, I know that there's probably, there's more that we could do in terms of online applications, but what we attempted to do is at least, at least be able to say everybody's treated the same way. So I hope no one was negatively...
I think people's nerves were just riled more than, because none of the reunions didn't happen. But it was just a matter of, we think we've got everything done.
Sure.
And now here's something else that we haven't, you know, when we started early enough to have it all completed, and we, you know, that kind of thing. And then the last thing, city cars. How do we evaluate, determine city cars, and when people live outside the city? If they're driving a city car, if that car goes home with them, if that car, you know, what, at what level do we authorize a city car, and, you know, how is that, you know, how, what is our cost, what is their cost, what, you know, what's the responsibility there?
As a matter of fact, that's one of David Freeman's first assignments, he has fleet. We initially, in this budget process, took thirty-five vehicles out of the fleet, which I'm not going to make eye contact with, with Daryl Hill, which he was excited about. I was not when you have two thousand vehicles. So what we're doing is literally having fleet operations be the gatekeeper for who decides who has a vehicle, as opposed to a self-reporting mechanism. So that's something else that we are getting our arms around.
Is the two thousand figure, does that include all of the, I mean, the ones the constitutional officers have, and all of that?
Yeah, it's, and I don't want to misstep, but I believe that's the universe, but I don't think we're talking about, like, tractors, okay? So, we are, right, so we're talking about everything in the fleet. So when you're talking about sedans, and maybe fourteen-hundred, or something along that level, but yes, sir, it's our entire fleet. And we're talking about issues, you know, to what extent do you look at compressed natural gas, or even our trash collection trucks. So we're doing a soup to nuts. This is the opportunity to figure out what's best.
Oh, and one more thing. In Campus Stella Heights, the Resource Center, over in Campus Stella Heights, they have some really good ideas about how to partner, the use of that facility, and the maintenance and upkeep, and, and the, what do you call it, the staffing of the facility as well. I really would like for us to sit down with the Campus Stella Heights and the South Side Coalition, those, that group of folks over, over on the South Side, to see how we can partner with them and get the maximum usage out of the Resource Center. Because that's been a kind of a back and forth kind of a thing for quite some time now, and what was intended, and what is, and what was taken away, and what, you know, all that kind of stuff. So I'd like to sit down and kind of hammer that out, and, you know, get some things on paper to determine, you know, the, to maximize the use of that thing. Because it's got a lot of potential. And that's it.
First, I wanted to thank all of you who were able to come down to the National Night Out in East Ocean View. It was a wonderful event. I think they said the highest turnout they've ever had. They said over seven hundred people, and Bravia did an awesome job working with the East Ocean View Civic League and the community there that put that together. Marcus was down there. So, great events. Thank you for that. And it was the Fairmont Park. I told Anthony that, say, game on, bring it on. Yeah. Angela still wants a car for the parade. The B-Poll tax, if you read the paper today, Chesapeake City Council is addressing, there's new legislation that allows new businesses to be exempt from that. It also...
For two years, two years.
For two years, right. And there's some other legislation, too, that was passed, that they can base the B-Poll tax off of income rather than gross receipts, or rebate it if the business has loss with it. And I think that it might be something down the road that we should look at. And I know that when we talk about taxes, that right now, in our times, economic times, losing that tax revenue, you know, sometimes doesn't sound great. But also, if Chesapeake does this, they could start attracting businesses that Norfolk would lose if we're not trying to do the same thing. And I think we want to create a business-friendly environment. I don't have all the details, I'm not in that realm, but I know that, you know, Chamber of Commerce has been active on this, and trying to get Norfolk to budge a little bit on this as well. And I don't know other council members' feelings on that.
Tommy Angelo, I actually had lunch with the Chamber Legislative Committee a couple weeks, three weeks ago.
Then I met with them, too.
Of course. Virginia Beach is, is already adopted. There are pros and cons. I mean, obviously it gives a new business a little jump, but if you're an existing business and competition, and you move beside them, do you have, should you? There, there's more. It seems obvious. I think we need to really talk about it, if we're going to do it.
Right. And I think the Chamber overall supports the initiative.
Chamber would like to get rid of all the...
Right, I know that. But they would like some baby steps, too, on, and maybe we need to engage them.
Well, I asked Marcus about that.
Yeah, I had conversations with him.
In February, when they first passed that ordinance, to make sure that we weren't the last city to, you know, don't want to be out of competition.
As long as we're not passing that additional burden on to our taxpayers.
Well, I think the idea is if the business opens up just for the first two years while they're in business, you relax the B-Poll. I think the other part about going about whether they make profit or don't get profit, and rebating, and, that's just opening a can of worms that can never be closed. But I...
Okay, this ought to be an agenda item for future discussion. Maybe we could start with Bernard. You've given us some legal analysis, or just tell us what the state statute would tell us. And then, once we get that, Mr. Manager, maybe you could tell us what you think, and what, give some idea about the financial impact that Anthony's hitting at, if any, or if we can quantify, then we can have a basis for really discussing with that.
Okay, fair enough.
The, the, the one question I would, I would care to know is, are they just talking about the license? Are they talking about the tangible property that's also associated?
Just the business license is all of what I understood.
But that's not a big one to me. The tangible property is what it is.
Just a, do you have an update on the police chief search? Applications closed?
No.
And still?
Okay. Timing of agenda items. Now that we've moved forward with a new meeting schedule, will there be a time where we're not getting the agenda items on a Friday night, and will we get them on a Wednesday after the meeting? And also, this goes along the line with the, and not to downplay what you did with the community outreach, but the, on the council priorities. There were a lot of people, including myself, that complained that did not know about that meeting. I read it online in a press release. It wasn't sent directly to council members, letting us know that you were going to have that. It came through a press release.
In defense of Bob.
I wasn't attacking Bob.
No, I'm just defending Bob.
If it was Bob, then let's go after Bob.
I called Bob when I got something from someplace else, and I was like, Bob, how come I didn't know about this meeting, and it wasn't oversight in, on his part, in his office's part, for not getting it out to the city council members?
But so far, it's...
Because then I got the email. People were just emailing and forwarding, and emailing and forwarding. I'm like, Bob, what is up?
He's been too busy with light rail planning.
Yeah. So that was a slushy to crack.
My interpretation was that the meeting was for the pop, the public, and not for us. That's why I felt we were...
Well, just like the budget, once we were invited to come to those, and I went...
We were invited to those. I didn't think we were invited to this.
Well, it's a public meeting. Why wouldn't we want to go to it?
I'm just saying, the public should have had the same notification.
But it was, I think, one of the problems, some of our more vocal constituents were upset that it wasn't announced a little bit earlier than what it was. So, just, okay. Also, there was a letter that all of us received back in March from Delegate Paula Miller, and I just want to bring it to everybody's attention. And it was signed by the governor. This established defense production zones, and some of the counties in Northern Virginia and Richmond area have already started jumping on board on this. It would kind of be like an empowerment zone, but just more for defense production, offering tax incentives to attract businesses that are related to the military industry. And I've talked to Marcus a little bit about this, but if you, it came in March from Paula Miller. She brought that to our attention. And the governor did sign it, so it became effective July 1st. And once again, just don't want to miss out on another economic development opportunity to bring businesses here. The final thing that I wanted to ask about was, and I, I'm new, so I'm just learning all of this still. I, I think I'm still new.
You don't get away with it.
Two years, two years. Why do we have our retreat in September, and why do we do it on a Monday and Tuesday when people are working? And I just, it just seems that, I don't know why, why that was originally, I would like to come back from a recess and go on, on a retreat, because that gives you guys time, you know, instead of dealing with council stuff, to plan the retreat. It just seems that we're going into September, school's starting, people have kids, are getting geared up with that. Some of us have full-time jobs, which has changed a little bit. Full-time jobs that take us away during the daytime. But it just, you know, when I think of retreat, I think of a weekend, you know, starting on a Friday night, going into a Saturday. And maybe there's some council members who disagree with me on that. But I just, the Monday, Tuesday thing, maybe it's convenient for staff, I don't know. But I just, maybe down the road, it's something to think about next year when we're scheduling the retreat, that maybe September is not the best time. We also have so many events. I mean, that's, that's where we start getting all the invitations for events and things, September, October.
I don't think there's anything magic about September. I mean, I think it's whatever the council wants to do.
I think that the issue on the Tuesday was because that's our meeting.
Right.
We have a meeting then. So that's, that's how the Tuesday. And I think a lot of people don't want to take away from their family on Friday and Saturday. So, and a lot of people that have kids, that are involved in sporting events and things, Saturday is tough. And, and you know, you got to remember the staff.
Right.
I mean, I, I'm working full-time, too, so I, I understand your pain on that. But I do think you need to remember that you've got staff, that you're pulling away from family. And, and the idea was that this was going to be a meeting on Tuesday, so it would, you know, took the place of that.
You know, hopefully the retreat will be more productive, you know, with Marcus and...
Well, no matter when you have it, the productivity doesn't change.
I mean, I know there's never...
Well, seriously, what I mean is, it's going to be good, whether it's Monday or not.
Yeah, I just know, I know there's probably never a good time to do it, but it just seems odd that we're doing it during a workday. That's it.
Interesting, I guess, to look around and find out when the other, you want to find out when the other cities, if there's a certain time schedule. I think you'll find most of them do during, do take them off during the work weekends, but just what Terry says, especially about the state.
Marcus, when did we, did you do a retreat?
It was separate from the administration. Yeah, it's, it was just the council members, not the administrative folks.
Free for all.
Well, Tommy mentioned retreat, and I know there was a blurb in the, in the paper about where we were going to have this. I don't know if we've, if we settled on the fact that we were going to go out of town, stay in town. I'm of the opinion, and I know this may take away from, unless people have a, you know, you know, whatever the council has a majority besides. But there's something that, there's a sense of consensus building that occurs when you get away from town, that doesn't occur when you just come to a meeting and leave. I mean, there is, I mean, that's what a bonding that occurs. I think it's important for us. And, but maybe that's not the overriding concern. It may be, I know Andy thinks we got to stay in town, I read that in the paper. What does anybody else think? It's, it's not, the productivity of the, the discussion is not going to rise or fall where we have it. But there's just something about sitting down, having dinner together as well, and, or just standing around after the, after the dinner, and talking that, that helps us, you know, understand each other better. And I think that's important.
I agree. That's why it's called a retreat.
What is the price differential between what we pay at it in, in town and out of town? I guess in town, this time we met at the Attics, right? So was that free?
Yeah, Harry said it was about five thousand dollars. I read that.
Harry didn't, oh. Harry, could you break that down?
To go, I think to go out there is about five thousand dollars. To go out there, meet it, go out on a Monday, spend the night, one night, and come back.
But it's not free in town either. That's what I meant. Is it?
Just the meals.
Just the meals? So the Attics was free to us?
I don't know what the breakdown, we can get you the breakdown. I don't know what the breakdown was like.
Sure, it's a city facility. We don't pay. I hope we would have paid for that.
Was there any charge?
You pay for where you go to school?
I agree. I think, you know, if you're sitting out of town for one night, probably I think the people more tend to, otherwise they're waiting till they're all sitting and get home and grab your lunch.
We've had times when council members had to go back in an office, you know, and couldn't spend the night, you know. What? Keeps asking.
You get your own room.
Everybody gets their own room. Okay, he's asking. We still got, that's the problem. Maybe he wants to ruin it.
That's why I want to stay here. Remember, we have televised meetings.
He makes me uncomfortable.
Not far out of town. Appreciate that one.
Okay, that's, one to stay here, three to go out of town, one I don't care, out of town, four. Out of town, four. Angela.
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, two I don't care, it's okay.
I like out of town, but it doesn't matter. I like out of town.
I probably won't be able to make the retreat. I'm going to Brazil.
We'll go with you.
Can we have our retreat in Brazil, Marcus?
So I won't matter. I got selected, I got selected to go on a delegation to Brazil.
Congratulations.
I will roommate with you.
Okay, so we're going out of town. Okay, the only issue I have is that this is my wedding anniversary, 31st. So I'm running out of here after the formal agenda, Mr. Burford. So you'll have to pick it up from there, okay?
Congratulations.
What number?
Thirty-one?
Congratulations, most marriages don't last 31 minutes.
Yeah.
Can Harry give you that number?
Okay, let's go.
Mayor and Council, based on the time, I'm going to skip the now program presentation. If we have time, I'll just come back to it. And we'll go right into the Park Place. And also, what I will do is the tax abatement relief ordinance. I think I'll also move that to the end because that's something that's timing, that we just want to do a series of discussions to make sure we get room for a Park Place light rail funding also. So with that said, I'm not sure who is very good. Okay, the purpose of this presentation is just to provide you with an overview and an update on the Park Place YMCA collaborative effort. What I will say is that at least two times before tonight, there's been a presentation to council. Once in April of 2010, then in December of 2010. Basically, what I'm going to share with you today is consistent with the December 7th presentation in terms of how the funds would have been pulled together, leveraging of the city investment for additional private investment. And I'll go through those pieces and I'm managing things. All right, okay, so on the next slide, basically, this has been going on for a while. In 2009, the YMCA requested that the city partner on the construction of a new YMCA in Park Place. After these discussions, basically, the city's contribution was in this 900, about $925,000. What's important, which we really didn't discuss when we provided you, we put it on the docket back at the end of June, is that again, this is, this will be the third time that we've had an opportunity to discuss this particular project within the last, last year. Basically, one of the keys with the funding, it's almost, it's very similar to the discussion, Washington, it's similar to the discussion we had earlier with Ward's Corner. In other words, funds were set aside for a specific purpose. And this particular project, the partnership with the Y, excuse me, in the, in the city, in the Y in Park Place, was basically, if you go back to 2007, there were city funds, again, not federal funds, but city funds that were provided to NRHA for projects in Park Place. Basically, the specific project that we pulled funds for, from, was the Park Place East Broadway Gateway Project. Some funds were set aside in 2007, some funds in 2008, and roughly about half a million dollars each time. During this process, what, what occurred was as the neighborhood was approached by the Y and the city was approached by the Y, really two things were happening. One is that there were funds set aside that we had sent over to NRHA, again, not federal funds, city funds for projects in, in the Park Place area. Because during that same time, the Park Place community went through a visioning and engagement process, they basically said, let's hold off on spending any of these funds that are associated with Park Place until we figure out what we'd like to have as an outcome from this visioning and engagement process. It's very similar to what we're attempting to do with neighbors, building neighborhoods. It's very similar to what has happened in even Fairmont Park. The whole concept of a community basically saying, these are the standards that are important to us and these, and these are the issues that are important to us. And the city listening and then trying to partner with that community. So I wanted to say that upfront, that basically, when we discussed this $925,000, it's reprogramming funds that were already set aside as early as 2007. So basically, in this, again, this Park Place visioning and engagement process, they asked, please, don't spend the funds, let's finish the process, and let's find something that is consistent with the outcome of this community engagement process. So with that said, basically, the proposal that you will have, or the ordinance that you'll have next week, is basically a, an $8 million project, okay? And that includes the land cost, the infrastructure improvements for a Y that would be in the Park Place community, a Y that's consistent with Ys in general in our communities. Basically, the $925,000, which is again, from funds set aside as early as 2007, would be the city's contribution. So in other words, the city would provide this $925,000 of previously earmarked funds, and that would leverage this $8 million investment in the community, which is consistent with the outcome of the Park Place, the greater Park Place envisioning process, which basically last fall, they finished the process. And having a, a Y, or having a community center, having something in that community that withdraw from people both in, in the community and outside of the community, is something that was one of the highlights of this envisioning process. Having said that, the, again, the $925,000 leverages almost $7 million, a little bit over $7 million for the project. What's important to also bring out is that there's also, as a part of this project, a early childhood education center. And I wanted to, you know, make sure that I say it that way, an early childhood education center, and not necessarily what some would consider a daycare center. What's going on is, again, with the city's, you know, $925,000 leveraging private investment, that would be additional investment for this early childhood education center, with, which basically, and I want to make sure I get this right, it would be the first five-star center in the state. So in other words, there's a rating system out there, and it's the Virginia Star Quality Initiative Rating System. And basically, while there are some four-star rated facilities in the Commonwealth, there are no five-stars. So that would be the top. So the concept here would be almost a, a learning laboratory, if you will, for youth. And that would be one of the key pieces for this project. So again, there's this $8 million facility, when you talk about the land and the construction, but also there's a five, potentially $5 million early childhood education center.
Okay.
That's an addition?
Yes.
It's 13 million?
Yes.
And that's a, again, a donation.
That's, really leveraging $1 million from 13.
Sure.
How much is the Y out of pocket?
How much is the Y out of?
How much of this is not being donated by Landmark Foundation in this project? How much of their money is in it?
Sure. Maybe, I don't know if Chuck wants to speak to that point in terms of the, the actual fundraising that you would have to do.
We have to raise all the money for the project.
That's not, no. The Landmark Foundation, we know is, it appears, if we're going to develop the Y, it's $8 million. We've just heard it's 13 million now. If there's a, basically, a million from the city, we know Landmark Foundation is giving how much?
Four plus a million.
Four plus, that's five million. Does that leave, I guess, eight million still out there?
There's a gap that the Y is prepared to cover until such a time as we do the fundraising on.
And the way it would work is, I guess, the Y is not out any money, there is no mortgage, it's all paid through donations to the Y.
Sure.
Okay.
That answers, okay.
And again, the next couple of slides is what you've seen before. The location, it would be built on Granby Street, and that's between 28th and 30th Street. Again, they would have the one street closure on 29th Street. Again, I mentioned some of the, what you would see in this particular project. Outside the childhood development center, it would be consistent with what you would see in the Y, gymnasium, outdoor pool, child watch center, and even a teen zone.
So it's a pool now?
It's an outdoor pool, yes.
I thought it was one of those spray parks.
Let me back up. It is not the Olympic-sized pool that, you know, you would maybe come to suggest when you see a pool. But yes, it is something where it could be fun for children to be outside.
So is it a spray park or a pool?
How would you?
Is this an outdoor spray park?
Okay.
Big difference.
Okay. And then, so basically, I've expressed where it is. So the, so what we're doing is a little bit of the community output. I wanted to make sure that this was also covered tonight. That there were a series of discussions within the community, focus group discussions. And basically, the community had support for the concept of a YMCA center. There were also concerns about the accessibility of the, the facility for the community. But I will say that some of the council members had the same question. I did get the letter, I shared it with you, I guess, late, latter part of June, which did come from the president of the Y. And I just highlighted that he did say that the Y is committed to the concept that no child should be excluded from YMCA programs for financial reasons. So that was one of the issues that was even a concern in the community as they went through this particular process. But some of the, when you start to look at some of the pros and cons, the affordability was an issue, but also having a safe place for both youth and adults was important. And having a facility, again, that serves all age groups. So having said that, I'll go to the next steps. And again, I've said it before, I really thought that we had gone down this road much more than I guess I thought we did in that December discussion. So this is really a rehashing of the December presentation. So again, the next steps would be for us to take an ordinance to council next week for $925,000. And basically, that would be the city's input for the project. Again, it's consistent with the Park Place engagement process. And that's what you'll have for you next week.
I just got one question. If the land was assessed at $247,000, why would we pay $925,000? I just want to know what a $925,000. The skin that we supposedly have in the game, understanding, Mr. Batten wanted us to have skin in the game as well, city donating the land. If that's the case, and it was assessed at a certain price, I just want to know what a $925,000.
Sure.
I did derive to.
Sure. My understanding is that the parcel that we're discussing, its most current assessment is closer to $800,000 than $240,000. So I can make sure that we valid, verify that well before you'd have to vote on it. But my understanding that it's not $925,000, I'll be the first to say that. But things change, values change over time.
What's the address of the property?
But my understanding is closer to, it's multiple.
What's the address that I'll look at right now in Norfolk Air?
Those guys.
There's these and bounds, there's several parcels.
It's a bunch of parcels.
All right. Marcus, while you're doing that, from what I understand, the community visioning process, whatever they went through a couple of years, this is where they decided they would like to take the money we had set aside for them that they could have, you know, with our permission placed around Park Place in any way. This is where, this is where they decided they want to go with.
Yes.
The second thing is, am I hearing that the use of facilities, as well as the early childhood center, no child who can't afford to pay will be turned away? Is that right?
Well, I can't say the same thing for the childhood development center because there will, my understanding is there will be a capacity issue. Well, that would.
It's not the Y?
No, I think they're going to partner with an entity to do that piece. But at some point, there are going to be so many slots. So I'm sure that Chuck stood up, he couldn't guarantee that.
At that shape. That is the YMCA's policy. But in the agreement that's prepared now, the YMCA thinks it's too much of a risk to have a contractual obligation to have a sliding scale. So that, that is their policy, but they're unwilling to contract for that in this center.
That's their policy in all of their other facilities?
I believe that's correct, yes.
So young people won't be turned away if they don't have any money from the Y.
I thought it was understood that the Y is going to be a Y. That this is not the field of where they're going to run the Y, the way that they run the other facilities.
That is, that's great.
I don't want people to get confused about, or think that this is going to fill a void when this is going to operate as the other Ys operate.
I guess you can help me, Terry. We've envisioned that.
Right, the neighborhood was not interested in another human services project. There's been a lot of money spent in Park Place, all well-intentioned, that has not changed the poverty level. The feeling from the community is that we need economic development. We don't see this Y as just being a Park Place Y. We see this as being a Y that will bring in people from surrounding neighborhoods that add to the diversity of our neighborhood, of Park Place, give opportunities to people that, in Park Place also, that would otherwise not be able to get down to the downtown Y, would offer things that the downtown Y doesn't offer. So it's not, not to be a human services project. This is not, this is where everybody that has no money now has a place to land. But as anybody that goes to Blacker Y knows, that if you want to be a member of that Y, they look at your ability to pay and adjust your membership accordingly. Similarly, the same thing will happen.
That's the only reason I asked Chuck for that letter, because the way it was presented early on is that this was going to fill the void for those kids.
This will fill a void. This will clearly fill a void. But it is not meant to be a human services project. That's not what the community is interested in.
But the early childhood education center takes it to a different level, in my opinion. We were just discussing the Y, I think that's, at least my, my, I, the way I view this would be different. I mean, this, the fact that there is a $5 million, this is going to then leverage a, this early childhood education center for, for, you know, kids from Park Place and this surrounding area, is, just takes it over the top.
But again, it would have been presented better early on. That's the critical piece that will impact the kids apart.
Right.
That's the intention.
That's the partnership that Mrs. Batten was requiring for the.
This other piece where, you know, it was presented as, not, not a Y, but it was presented at this table that.
Maybe the language was sloppy.
My question for you, Marcus, is this five-star rating. They said that it's going to be a five-star rated facility, but it has to be rated first. It has to be built, they have to run the program. ODU's Child Center is a four-star rated. It's the only one, I believe, there's one in, there's none in the state of Virginia, I believe. There's no five-star rated.
Right, exactly.
Right, ODU's a four.
Right.
And they just barely got that. So selling it as a five-star rated facility without it opening and who, who you're hiring to teach and run, I don't know, it just, it bothered me to hear that. I, I think it's great for Park Place, and I, it's not my place to go into Park Place and tell them they can't have it. And this has nothing to do with the Boys and Girls Club versus this. You know, these are two separate issues. I just go back to subsidizing a project. We told the school system that asked for $900,000 more in this budget, that they couldn't get it. They backed off on that. And we're subsidizing a, a budget for, and I look at the Y almost like a corporation because they have a $5 billion income is what they bring in. And it's that, that whole week that this was being discussed, you saw them in Virginia Beach, you saw them in, in, I think Chesapeake, reaching their hands out, asking for the cities to give something. And I don't always have a problem with that. I just, I just want to get something else out of it. Yeah, this is economic development, that's great. But if we're really doing this for the, the community, then why do we always have to give something in order to get something back?
Do you understand why that is done, why that's being asked for? That's not the Y that's asking for that.
Yeah, but that's the same thing with.
No, but who's asking for that is Mr. Batten. And that's where the funding comes from. If you ask the Y, they actually would rather pay for the whole thing. But the stipulation on the donation was that Mr. Batten said, we will not donate this money. money unless the city is prepared to financially demonstrate a assurance with this, a commitment." So it isn't the city that's telling, you know, that's, the Y's not asking for the money.
But very, but the Y could come up with that money and purchase it as well? It really has to be the city has to do this?
If we're going to get the money from the Batten's.
So, okay, well then, let's go with the church. The church that's going to, we're buying this property from, that they don't pay taxes, they're tax exempt in the city, but we're going to buy, they're going to get money out of this. And if this is the better Park Place, and I don't, I don't know the leaders of the church or what their financial state is, but it just sounds like that if this is going to be something good for that community, that they would back off a little bit on the price of it. They don't pay taxes, and that they have that land, they're not paying taxes on it because they're tax exempt.
So is this the new standard that you're proposing to have for every time we buy money from Sunday coming to church?
No, but it's a big issue now because, you know, we just talked about nonprofits coming to us and asking for tax exemptions, and you have some localities now that are looking at, we're setting some of those.
So what do you want? What's your point?
It's different times, and we have, we have priorities that are not being addressed, such as education in our city.
So this $900,000 is not available for us to pay in schools? Nobody would say, more than me, that money needs to go to the schools. This is not money, Tommy, that's available and just hanging out there. So we could say, "Okay, let's put, shift that over to the schools." If we don't use it for this, and that's fine, but it's not going to come back to the general fund to use for other things. It'll be Park Place will say, "Okay, now instead, we're going to decide to do landscaping at Broadway," or something like that. It's not...
Is that true? Is that money really, can't be used for, go back, so at the end of the year?
That's been since 2007.
I don't have a problem with that, but I just want to know where the number 925 came from, because it's not associated with that land.
Right, and that was where Gina came up with that?
I think it was a negotiated purchase. I don't think anybody here can, was at the table when that...
And Terry, I haven't said that I'm against it.
No, I know, but I just want you to understand, I don't want you to be saying apples to apples that this money's floating around, and if it's not used for Park Place Y, then we can use it for something else of which we have many, many needs.
Okay, we're going to vote on this next week, so we can schedule some time to talk about it again next week, too. We'll get to the slide real fast.
Can I ask one other question? If the deal doesn't close with the city unless they find the money, does YMCA have to finish the fundraising efforts in order for us to close the deal with this? Or once we vote on this, we've purchased the property, what's to say the project doesn't go forward? Are we stuck with that property now? What's the...
We're not buying the property, we're giving them the money.
We're getting a grant for them to purchase the property. I believe they negotiated the price, and that our security is that the Y has agreed that if they don't complete the construction as agreed upon and the time agreed upon, that we have the right to take the title to the property.
As I recall, now, the ask originally from the church was substantially higher than the Y in a quarter.
It couldn't have been. I know that for a fact, too. It was not.
Well, all right.
I want to know who negotiated 925 and where that number came from, because I know that that was not the number. And I know that land was not worth that. And if all the skin in the game that we had to provide was the land, and then my question is, why did we not just buy the land and then give the land over to the Y? If that were the case, wouldn't, it wouldn't have been 925. So I want to know where the number 925 came from, and how early did that number come into play? Because if we're giving somebody a grant, we still should be fiscally responsible if we understand what we got the land assessed for, and we're going to give, pay above and beyond that. I mean, I just want to know, from my own personal identification.
Okay, we'll get you that information. Okay, right. I think the gym component of any one of the Y is one aspect. I think everything else is fine, is terrific, but that's the one thing I need to get my, my head, my arms around my head on. And the problem I have with that is that you have gyms, private gyms down at Asworth's Corner and one down the street from here. You have some certain dance studios that are on 21st Street, 20th Street. And I think that, I mean, this is, I think it's a terrific project. The trouble is, is getting my arms around private tax-paying gyms that are in the area. That's the one part of this whole equation that gives me heartburn, that it affects those individuals and those businesses that have been in the city. I need to get over that perhaps, or that, that is the part that does it. Other than that, it's a terrific project, but I have a hard time with that. Okay. We can get answers from both of those. Lightrails?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's always a pleasure to be in front of you this evening. I have the distinct honor of presenting an update on light rails. If you can't feel it, there is a buzz in the city. We are about to put into service the Commonwealth's first light rail system. Today's presentation is to give you an overview of this week's activities, as well as an update on the funding required to complete light rail. You may be familiar with the $338 million, $338.2 million, to be exact, which was our previously provided by HRT estimated cost to complete. No action is required today. We'll bring forward an ordinance next week requesting the public hearing be scheduled for consideration on September 13th. We're going to revenue service next Monday, August 22nd, but as I believe everyone's aware, this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we're going to have free service, so that everybody in the city, not only our citizens, but our visitors and guests, business community, and the entire region can come and enjoy what we have experienced already with our initial ride a few weeks back. We've partnered with Hampton Roads Transit, the business community, and other organizations to plan a variety of activities this coming weekend. The goal, as I touched upon a moment ago, is to provide folks with an opportunity to ride light rail and see what it's like with the anticipation or hope that going forward, they'll enjoy it and see the benefit of it, and take advantage of the opportunity to ride light rail, either for business or a variety of different reasons. This coming Friday and Saturday, we have events planned at all of the stations. You'll see that the bulk of them are on Saturday. I, for one, will be at Newtown Road Friday morning, I understand, around 5:30, 6 o'clock, a very large cup of coffee. Wanted to thank Breck for his leadership in coordinating our opening activities. He, on behalf of the city, and Denise Thompson, on behalf of the administration, have done an outstanding job of pulling a variety of things together, including all the things that go into putting on an event, but not just one event, there's seven events. And then there's three days, a quick total would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 different events. Light rail is a wonderfully green way to travel for reasons that we know. It gets vehicles off the road, helps reduce congestion, helps reduce congested parking, congested roads, and a variety of different things. Also cuts down on our fuel, and this last bullet will hopefully promote transit-oriented development along our light rail route with the hope that in the coming years, and even decades, that other localities will be joining into our system. Next is our funding update. Light rail funding is very complicated. As you can see from this slide, we have a variety of partners, from the federal government to the Commonwealth, and even our own regional transportation at HRT. With federal government and state government's involvement, we entered into a full funding grant agreement, and I think it's about that thick. But simply said, it is the agreement among all the parties to make sure that there's sufficient funding in place to complete construction, not only construction, but to also put light rail into service. They call it revenue service. And you'll see that referenced a variety of places throughout the presentation. At the very bottom, if you will, of the full funding agreement, is the City of Norfolk. Essentially says that the federal government's going to put in their piece, state's going to put in, or the Commonwealth's going to put in their piece, and we have to make up whatever's left, whether that number is smaller or larger. When we last presented to you, we were putting in place some interim authorization. In the next three slides, I'm going to walk through what is a broad and general presentation of the funding, starting with the $338.2 million of estimated cost to complete. Federal government, then for roughly half of that, at $169.5 million. To date, the Commonwealth of Virginia has provided $77.7 million. You add these two together, you come up with $247.2 million. Subtracting the $247.2 million from the $338, leaves $91 million. That $91 million is what's remaining to be funded, again, based on the $338 million. Middle of the page here is the funding that the city has put in place to date. We issued bonds in 2008, and also in 2010. We've had some interest earnings over the years that have us just under $50 million. So when we subtract the $49.7 million from the 91, it leaves us with remaining funding authority of $41.3 million. I mentioned a moment ago that the last time we were in front of you with regard to funding for light rail, we put in place some interim authorization. That's this reallocated CMAC monies, the $13.4 million. So taking the $41.3 million from the prior page, subtracting $10 million received from the Commonwealth, through the Commonwealth Transportation Board in fiscal year 11, fiscal year 2011, combining that with the reallocated CMAC monies, you come to $23.4. Subtracting the two, we come down to $17.9 million. That $17.9 million is where we were as of yesterday. Hopefully, everyone's either read the paper or seen the press, emails, websites. We have a new estimated cost to complete. Mr. Shaquet at HRT has indicated that we will, light rail will not cost more than $318.5 million. That's roughly $19.8 million less than our prior estimated cost to complete. So to take a step back, before yesterday, we ended up with $17.9 million of funding still needed to put our light rail into revenue service. By virtue of the revised cost to complete from HRT, we have, in that $338 million, we had $10 million of contingency. We're not going to use that. That's $10 million of the $19.8. In addition, there are project savings that aggregate to $9.8 million. You combine these two together, there's $19.8 million of savings. And parenthetical here, one of the things that we're continuing to work towards with the Commonwealth is clarification with regard to the contingency, and whether or not that is being viewed as savings by the Commonwealth, which could have them participating in that savings, which means that the benefit to the city wouldn't be $10 million, it would only be $5 million. All along, we've believed that we would share in project savings, not contingency, but project savings, split equally with the Commonwealth 50/50. So of both of these numbers that totaled $19.8 million, the city would benefit from half. That takes our $17.9 million down to $8 million. It's $8 million of funding authority required to complete light rail. This number is significant because as we continue to work with HRT to put light rail in service, and even after we go into free service on Friday, revenue service on Monday, the last invoices will come in, come to HRT, go run through our process, they'll come to the city for payment. What we need to have is sufficient funding authority to make sure that we can pay those bills as they come in. We're optimistic that HRT will be able to produce savings greater than $19.8 million. But as of now, we're at $19.8 million. So the $8 million number is what we believe the ceiling, if you will, of additional funding authority required for light rail. But as we indicated the last time we were in front of you, we're continuing to work towards identifying additional funding sources. As I mentioned on the previous slide, assumption that the Commonwealth is going to participate in us not utilizing construction contingency, that's worth $5 million to us. And again, continuing to share in the project savings with the Commonwealth, that takes the $8 million number down to $3 million. The $8 million number is where we're at now. If we could, before putting an ordinance in front of council for consideration, reach agreement with the Commonwealth on the $10 million, then we won't ask for eight, we'll ask for three. Again, we're still working towards that.
Darrell, you're doing a great job. This is, and that's why we did a scenario one, scenario two. If you looked at light rail as a $328 million project with $10 million on top of that from a contingency, on top of the contingency, it would be simple to say that this project was a $328 million project that came in under budget. So that's why Darrell has this scenario two, which basically says that $10 million, if that is just pure savings, we wouldn't share with the Commonwealth in those savings, and therefore, we could realize the entire 10. And we would be talking with you, a gap being from zero to three, as opposed to a gap being from zero to eight. And that's a very key point.
Why wasn't that established early on? Because did they not, did they not think that that was even a possibility?
Well, I will say two things, Mr. Vice Mayor, is that, one, the Commonwealth has been a great partner, okay? And so has the federal government. So I don't want to come across at all as saying that they have not been good partners at all. Just different interpretations of what that second contingency was. You know, in other words, in that 328 contingency was in there, I think $8 million.
I get it, but I'm just saying, me and Barclay would have these conversations with the other gentleman about contingency. So I thought that, you know, just early on, whatever we were able to say, whatever we didn't use in those...
I think it would have been their question if they hadn't handed up more money, right?
The biggest question is, what's the cost of the project? What was the budget? And from the point, if you say it was $338...
They go back to where we started before they decided we had to cut.
Right, right. And I will say, there's another slide that gets us down to zero, okay? So, go ahead.
So we have taken what was $338 million estimated cost to complete, revised it to $318.5 million, and we're currently at $8 million is the remaining funded, funding authority required. The possibility is it could be down to $3 million of funding authority required. And as we continue to work with our partners, both the federal government and the state government, we are exploring the potential for Commonwealth to share in a variety of safety enhancements. These are not all the safety enhancements. These are outside of light rail. These are things that the city has paid for outside of the light rail project because we believe it's in the best interest of the city. We're working with the Commonwealth to see if they will share in some of those costs. We believe that they will share in some, we're trying to get them to share in more. There's the ongoing VDOT audit to be determined, we don't have a number there, as well as additional federal assistance, we don't have a number there. But we are continuing to work on all three of these fronts to secure additional funding for light rail, with the goal being that there would be zero additional dollars provided by the City of Norfolk's funding.
Darrell, does all these numbers include recovery or attempts to recover from some of our consultants or people that...
That's a no, and I know that there are ongoing...
There are ongoing...
Legal issues between HRT and some of the contractors in an attempt to settle to recover some, some additional funds. And if that happens, and some...
And if that happens, and some of it should happen, that'll go to our bond, that'll go to the bottom line, too.
Are the legal fees in here, or that's separate?
The legal fees are into 328, and some of the consultants, you know, we fired all the consultants and paid them, which is baffles me.
We'll be getting some of that money back to this project. I believe, what number there is, can't tell you.
The point is, they're still trying to recover, and it's not in the multi-millions of dollars, but they're still trying to recover from people that may have been paid one too much or didn't do their job right.
And the VDOT, I mean, out of the region, at the transportation planning, it's the MPO now, there's an audit that VDOT has been doing of all these projects in the region that receive regional money for transit and for transportation projects, to see what's left over. When that money actually comes on the table, we'll be able to make a request that some of that money come to our light rail project. And so, there's a, almost certain, there's a very real possibility, very, that some of those monies will, that some money will come on the table, and that they will be applied to this project. So the whole idea is to hold us harmless.
How do we know if the ordinance will say 8 million or 3 million or zero?
Here's what we're doing, Councilman Williams. We're trying not to continuously come back to council. All we're asking for is authority. At some point, these bills are going to start to come in, and the last thing we want to do is not have the authority to pay them. So let me put it this way, I am more than convinced it's not $8 million. But we don't want to come every other Tuesday saying we need another $150,000. So again, it's just authorization. If it's necessary for us to report back to council, you know, we will do that. But the point is, it won't be $8 million.
Is the manager needs authority to address the issue.
Marcus Woodley authorized a couple months ago, that was related to this...
To receive that $13.4 million. And that was good news.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
There'll be some more of those CMAC funds available.
We may end up paying it, and we'll recoup your money over a period of time, so you don't have to come back to us for...
Right. We don't want to have discussions every Tuesday about light rail funding.
I'm comfortable with the authority, but I would appreciate an email just of how things are going.
Sure, sure.
An update.
Yeah, an update. I mean, it could be just, you know, it could hand it out to us, but I would like to have it out.
Didn't we vote on money in 2010? Wasn't there some money that, was there a slide that...
Sure.
Right there, the 2010 bond issue.
Right, yes.
Didn't we vote on that as bonds? That was our, this council's vote. So we... Right, that's what I was asking about, because I turned to you and said, I said, is this going to be extra money? I had asked about that. I think it was about 30 million. We voted on authority for some kind of bonds.
That's what I was...
I know this is sad, I just can't remember. We did...
I think that the transaction that you're referencing was a water bond.
Yeah, that was a water bond, because you voted against it.
Right.
You were on council.
That was, no, 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 this was something more recent.
This was the 13.4. The 13.4 you did that.
It was at CMAC, right there, 13.
Interim authorization.
Yeah, that was a water bond.
That's what you voted on last...
The Series A and B. The Series A and B was voted on by council in, I believe, November of 2009, for bonds that were issued in January of 2010, calendar years on how...
One way to look at this is that we, there's a 300, this is the largest public project in history of the city.
And it was a water bond.
And there was, and it's a $318.5 million project. So far, the city has spent $49.7 million to leverage a $318 million investment, okay? And I know there are guys who do this for a living, but at some point, you could calculate for us, that investment, what we've received back, as far as how many jobs and how many taxes have been paid off of that money? So we finally get to a net figure, okay? I mean, there's been some return to us from that investment being made in our, around involved, right? Wouldn't you think?
Absolutely.
Okay? So that there's been a payroll, there's been all of that stuff. So, you know, that's created a purchasing power, which is in our, to our benefit. Aren't there some, I mean, can't you run that through some software program and find, and give us a decent figure?
Is it realistic in the future to look at, not necessarily HRT per se running this line? I don't know that much about HRT, but let's say we were to, and I'm just discussing, is there anywhere, any precedent where private industry comes in and says, I will pay for the right of way, I will run the light rail system? Other than HRT, which is this governmental type agency that will run it, let's say, to the naval base?
Andy, if he can find that person.
I'm just, is there precedent for something like that?
I don't think so, because the federal government is going to subsidize half of it.
It has to be, the federal funds have to come through a regional transit agency.
And that was, if we could somehow have put down our foot at the very beginning and said, this is just going to be constructed in Norfolk, so we're going to be at this table, and we'd like to make every decision with you, probably would we have gotten off on the right foot. The federal government required, because this was a starter line, and all these lines are seen as regional lines, and HRT is the regional transit provider, they required that HRT be the contractor, because they want to make sure the Norfolk line would match up with what the line looks like in Virginia Beach, and so, I mean, and so, I mean, there's good reasons to do that. Usually, these lines go over across any number of jurisdictional boundaries. In this unique case, it did not. And we probably could have put our, or we should have, or tried to put our foot down and say, this is our project, we're going to be right here at the table. And, but that's, you know, that's past us. Who knew? This thing had received so much scrutiny, we'd had to jump, this was a, actually, you know, we chased it for, I mean, I say this 20 years, but it received so much scrutiny at the federal level. Every nickel and dime was scrubbed up there about, should, you know, should this budget be a good budget? And then on top of that, the FDA agreed in a written document to be the overseer, I mean, to actually provide oversight to the construction piece. And, you know, that didn't really occur very well.
Hell, they should be on the hook.
I've had that discussion with Mr. Ogoff.
There's been a second collision at Second Street and Brampton Avenue today, 5:00. So we need to find out whether there's something peculiar about Second Street and Brampton Avenue.
That's why I stepped out, was going to bring your attention before we go upstairs. My standing today is okay, but that's exactly...
But that's the same thing.
Yes, sir.
Same car? Can I just ask a quick question about our agenda? The hornets that we have about the Arts Festival building being nonprofit, are all of the nonprofits downtown, do they not pay the bid?
If they're in the district, they would pay the bid.
They would or would not?
Would.
Would.
This is the, to not pay it, right?
This is a request for you to exempt them from the real estate taxes.
No, no, that's not what I asked. I asked the two taxes.
Included in the real estate taxes, the bid. Bid is a real estate tax...
I know that.
Which is required to be paid by all of...
So do all of the nonprofits downtown pay all of it, including the bid?
Anybody who is not exempted by this council pays all of it.
The nonprofit, can we exempt just the taxes, not the bid, is what I think she said.
I just want to know, are there any examples?
Nonprofits don't own property.
If they're exempt, they don't pay.
They pay zero.
So nobody downtown, none of the nonprofits are paying?
Nobody downtown has to pay the bid that is exempted.
Right.
That is exempt.
That is exempt, yes.
Right. Are there other examples of similar organizations that aren't exempted?
Because tonight, you're exempting two nonprofits, that would suggest that there are nonprofits out there that are paying taxes. They aren't exempt by what we call classification, it's a designation which has to come through this table.
I think what the difference is with the marriage is in, most of them don't own the buildings. These two entities happen to own the real estate. Most of them lease from someone else, and we still get...
Are from us, a lot of them lease just from us.
Yes.
In the future, you're going to make sure in our budget time, that we do nonprofits that proceed tax exemption, but also get grants from us.
Sure.
That was, I think, in the US.
Yes, that was a part of the presentation we won't get to tonight.
One thing Darrell's showing here is, because of the reduction in everyone, the cost of the thing is $318 million, so we're now at $43 million a mile, which compares favorably with all of these other, you know, with every other project that we're aware of. Salt Lake City costs less because it was built on a, you know, a desert bed, and down streets that were built for stagecoaches to turn around in them when the Salt Lake grid was put together, you could, I mean, it's huge streets, and so, I mean, anyway, so this is, the paper said in the last 10 years, I think it's really actually a little more than that, this may be one of the cheapest ever. So we got value for what we shared.
And I think even Mr. Chikad would tell you, this was never a $228 million project. We value engineered that thing down to make everybody happy. And I know a number of us asked the question, when you go from point A to point B, how do you go from $298 million to $300 million to $228? And I think you're building a smaller building, but we were, some of us were convinced you could do it, so we weren't.
Yeah, and we weren't the only people that did that. Other startups were doing that, too. And the people at the FDA have changed some of their methods now to also include, like, livability issues as far as transit is concerned, not just, you know, down to the, what's the very cheapest we can get this thing? And because they realized that they started producing projects that were so bare-boned that the communities wanted more, and so they started adding more.
Paul, I know you alluded to the 7.4 miles, but, you know, having been on Charlotte, ours cover a lot of water. We go over a couple of bodies of water. I don't know if you take that into account when you talk about costs.
You're old downtown streets, too.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, when you begin to look at that one over water...
Well, this is the last week of the...
Probably would be less if you didn't have to go over a body of water.
I could.